We're good?
Okay. Good evening, we call this meeting of June 22 to order. First of all, welcome back. It's great to be here. It's been 15 months. And at the time, I remember we had a meeting in this room and said we'd be gone a little while while we flattened the curve. And 15 months later, here we are. So I just want to take a moment to reflect about the year that we had or 15 months in the past, how it's affected us, our families and our community. Thank you. I'd like to go over some quick items before we begin our agenda. We clearly have a different setup in this room than people are used to. First, this evening, we will be accepting public comment, both remotely and in person, for those items allowed for public comment. This meeting is being broadcast on Zoom and on the Needham Channel, which can be found on cable and streaming online. The agenda has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. If we experience any disruption on Zoom, this meeting can be accessed either on television or online at needhamchannel.org. The layout of the hall includes a monitor in front of us where we can speak with members of the public who wish to participate during a public hearing. The screen behind us will show what is on our monitor. We'll be accepting public comment tonight during our public hearings. I'll be taking comments from those in the hall first, and then we'll be turning to those who wish to speak via Zoom. In the hall, please approach the microphone and queue up in the aisle. For those participating via Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to be heard. Please state your name and address for the record. All voting matters tonight will be conducted by a voice vote. Thank you for your time. And with that, we go to the first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing, EverSource Grant of Location, Edgewater Drive. Jacqueline Duffy, EverSource Energy, and I believe she is coming to us via Zoom.
How are you tonight? Can you hear me? Hello?
Just wait a mo— Ms. Duffy?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Can you adjust your volume? We can't hear you in the hall.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit.
How about that? Is that any better?
Yeah, that's better and better. Yep, we're—that's fine. Okay, Ms. Duffy, is there any video on that?
No, there's no video.
Okay, that is fine. Thank you. So you're here on a petition for conduit that's going to be on 250, it's on 250 Edgewater Drive. The floor is yours to describe the application.
Yes, Mstar Electric, DBA, EverSource Energy would like to install 10 feet of conduit at 250 Edgewater Drive to provide electric service.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Patrick, is everything in order on this application?
It is, Mr. Chair, although the builder is here to discuss the process by which the work has been performed.
That is correct. Okay, and Mr. Marino, is that correct? If you please approach. It's my understanding that this conduit was laid— yep, you can sit right there—in the public way prior to the approval of this board.
Correct.
Okay, can you please explain?
I'm afraid I don't have—I don't have a very good excuse, Mr. Chairman. I was unaware of the process. I gave the obligation to my electrician, who was new to the town. He did have it—the trench and the conduit and the installation of the conduit inspected and approved by the electrical inspector. As far as the grant of location, I was unaware that we were supposed to petition your body. So I apologize. It's the first time I've done a project in Needham.
Okay.
All I can say is it won't happen again. So my apologies.
Okay, and I will just tell you, we've had issues in the past with this type of work being done, especially for builders who are new to town. We've tried in our permitting process to flag these so that this does not happen again. And I know now that you're aware of this issue.
I am aware.
In town. Are there any comments from the board on this applicant? Ms. Cooley?
As we continue to try to figure out how to solve this problem, I'm thinking—we've gone through highlighting in the application that you get to sign, right? But it seems now in multiple cases, we've had the electrician be the person who's been the prime on it. And I don't think we've really undertaken education aimed at the electricians. Maybe there's a different aspect that we can try to improve as we're trying to make this happen. Because, as you know, if you had a neighbor who objected for some reason—it happens on occasion, there's a tree that's right there, too close to driveway, I don't know what it might be—they've missed their opportunity, and it gets very complicated for everybody, so.
So one of our next steps is to see if we can get a meeting together with the appropriate folks at EverSource to see if we can understand the full totality of the process and where the breakdown is happening. Because as you said, we put into place what we thought were a lot of safeguards, and it continues to happen. So we'll reach out to EverSource and get a meeting set up with them.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to discuss this matter? Is there anyone on Zoom? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I come back to the board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve of the application.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I can second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? That's unanimous. Thank you. Best of luck with your building.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, all new alcohol restaurant license, PM Story Corp., doing business as Little Spoon.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the consent agenda. I understand there's a change, though.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Thank you for pointing that out. The consent agenda contains—let me just—number—item number one, which actually has an error in it as far as the listing. So what I would like to do is remove number one. Get a motion to move—remove number one from the consent and then vote it in its entirety. Is there such a motion?
Can I just ask, Mr. Chairman, maybe if we said, can we—just for the record, can we treat this as a motion to approve the consent agenda with—except for item one?
That's correct.
Okay, I'd offer that motion, please.
I second it.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next public hearing.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry. With item number one, which is updating the special municipal employee designation list, are we going to deal with that at a later time?
We will. That list will be corrected and come back to us.
At a later meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Little Spoon, is everyone in—Sandy, Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. Ah, we can see you. Well, welcome.
Yep.
So in front of us, we have an application for a new alcohol license, 952 Great Plain Avenue. If you could introduce yourself and tell us about your business, please.
Oh, my name is Apilak. I am going to open a restaurant named A Little Spoon at 952 Great Plain Avenue. It's going to be Thai, Thai restaurant.
Great. And are you the owner or are you the manager, the proposed manager? Is that correct?
I'm the owner.
You are the owner of the property. Terrific. And I see from your application, you have other restaurants that you have owned, correct?
Yes, I have one in Newton Center. Yes.
That's terrific. Okay, and then is the proposed manager also on Zoom?
Yes. I think so. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, could you please tell us a little bit about your background?
My name—my name Apishat Simapa. So I—I—I have been in the restaurant business years. So I—I—I am a manager. I work in the restaurant in Lexington also. Yeah, and I work—I work for the Thai restaurant in in North Andover. They call a lot of eat. So—I—I work for both restaurants. And now I'll become the manager of the Little Spoon.
Great. And we have the full application in front of us, and we're looking for two decisions tonight with our motion, one that it is near Houses of Worship, and of course, the second to approve this application. We've read through your materials. I'm going to open up to the board for any questions. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion on this item?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, and that motion includes approval on both A and B? Okay, is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion now on this application? Dan, are you going to talk about our—
I'll—I'll just—now, speaking to the manager, do you pronounce your first name Apishat? Is that correct?
Yes, my name Apishat.
Okay. You understand that as a manager, you will be—you're personally responsible for everything having to do with the liquor—with liquor sales at the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, and you're in a—you're in a neighborhood—you're across the street from a church?
Yes.
Okay, and this motion that we're making specifically finds that you're not going to be causing a problem in the neighborhood?
Sure, so I'll do everything I can to make neighborhoods happy.
Okay. Very good. And very good. We'd like to—we—we want to see you succeed, but as you know, the rules are strict, and this is—and you're taking this responsibility on with the application.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we come to the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Have we allowed—
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom wishes—to be heard on this matter? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. I wish you the best of luck in your restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Great. Yes.
Very excited to see them coming. They have a lovely restaurant in Newton, so—
Terrific.
Good news for the community.
Good. Hope we'll all be there. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Needham Housing Authority. And I invite Mr. Foster up to say a few words on this item. And I will say you are the first live person in front of us, and it's great to see you, Reg.
Maybe I should have the agenda signed by everybody.
I don't know about that.
And sell it as an NFT. NFT, what do you think?
Yeah, NFT, that's right. That's right.
I want to give mine.
That's great. So Reg, you come to us due to an election to the board and to ask for us for a motion. Can you please explain the situation that you're in with your new member? Thank you.
You have—the details in your packet, and I've reviewed the brief description, and it's, you know, accurate. And also a multi-page memorandum of guidance, public housing notice—yeah, whatever—notice 2101, the first one from DHCD this year, covering this matter. And it really hearkens back to a change in the law in 2014 or 2015. It's always been the Commonwealth's desire to have a, you know, to ensure that there's a tenant commissioner on every local housing authority board. There are 240 local housing authorities in Massachusetts and all. We have always had, as long as I've been around, a tenant commissioner. We've just, you know, worked to make that happen. So that's gone back—I guess I've been here since 2009 or so, and I think it goes back even before me. And—and—and what this notice in the law did finally in, you know, the beginning of 2021 is to figure out how to make that happen. Because all of the towns are similar to us. They have had four elected members and one appointed member by the governor. So this affects—this provision affects one of the four elected seats. And this has the process for converting it from an elected seat by the voters to a appointed seat by the Board of Selectmen. And in brief, the way the process works after that conversion is made is the tenants' associations—any recognized tenants' associations have a right to make a limited number of nominees to the select board. And the select board of the town then uses its normal process to review, interview those tenants, and—and then appoint one of those tenants. And that's for a five-year term. It's the replacement for the elected five-year term of that particular seat. Now, this provision didn't take place until after town elections, which was, what, the 13th or 14th of April? So—and so it took effect on May 15th. And basically, what it said is the first elected position that becomes vacant after May 15th is automatically becomes the—the appointed position. And that vacancy could be just a natural end of somebody's term, or it could be resignation or something like that. In our case, we had a tenant running for that open commissioner's position in April, and in fact, gathered—as she is proud to tell us from time to time—more votes than many of the other select persons that were voted in to office this April. And that woman is Janice Bennett, and she is presently the elected commissioner—tenant commissioner—to replace Karen Huey, who had done the job the previous five years and had been a terrific tenant commissioner. We've always had terrific tenant commissioners. And Janet is a regular at our board meetings, or as long as I can remember. Generally attends them in person in the last few months by Zoom and is familiar with the operations of the housing authority and is, I think, been a tenant for upwards of close to 20 years in one of our—up in Cooks Bridge, up in the north of town. So the—this regulation or these guidance that we received actually, you know, anticipates this sort of situation in towns and says there's an option to submit a waiver to DHCD if the housing authority and the town feel that's the right way to go. And that waiver basically says, no, we've already got a tenant commissioner, and—and that's the position that we would like to eventually be converted into the appointed position by the select board. In this case, this would be in 2026 because Janice was just elected this spring. Otherwise, if we do nothing, then the first vacancy that opens up, let's say, just naturally would be a expiration of a term, would be in 2023. And that would be Penny Kirk's commissioner's seat. And so that would no longer be an elected seat, just by, you know, automatic action of their rules.
Thank you for that. Any questions on this request? Mr. Nelson?
All right. Nice to see you. Thanks for being here. Question for you about the tenant position. So having one representative has been the process for a while, I guess, as a tenant. Has there ever been any talk about having more than one tenant representative or anything like that? And—if not, why not? As far as having more representation, I guess, from the—the tenants that are living there and more input?
Not to my knowledge, and for no particular reason, although some of the people here go back further than I do. But no, it's never really come up as a—a goal.
Thanks, man.
That it was always an option for more tenants to choose to run for election to the commission previously. So I think the commission has actually always worked to ensure that there was a tenant who wanted—to run. But—but it certainly was an option for people in the past.
Question, Miss?
Can you explain a little bit about the board composition currently? So you are the chairman of the board, correct?
Yes.
And you were appointed by—
I am the state appointment, yes.
And when were you appointed?
So I was—I—I—I'm—I actually bipartisan appointment. So I was originally appointed to fill a vacant seat, 2013, I believe, by Governor Patrick. And then, in a year or two later, it's appointed to the five-year term, reappointed by Governor Baker. And then, just this spring, I was reappointed to another five-year term as the state appointee.
Okay, so you were first brought on in 2013?
I actually ran—I was appointed by the select board in 2009, 2009, when there was a vacancy. And I served out that term for a year or so. Then I ran for commissioner in one of the elected seats and was appointed—I was elected there. And then, when the prior state appointee retired, I applied for the state appointment in 2013 or so.
And that's how that process works for that role, for your role?
Yes. This—this—all—everything I talked about does not affect the state appointment process.
So the board reports to you?
Uh, no. No, we are all equal members. So we only act as a collective. The chair is—by the bylaws, organizes the board meetings and arranges for the agenda and does a lot of other things. But no, the—under the Chapter 121B, we are all equal.
Mr. Matthews?
And you know this better than anyone, but I—I'll say it if it's helpful. The basic structure for a local housing authority is a five-member board. Four locally elected people with a rotating five-year terms and one appointed by the governor. But they're all equal members. They meet and choose their own chair. The state, for a long time, has had a policy encouraging all boards to have at least one tenant in—in the mix. But I get the impression that that hasn't happened in some places because this new statute is a way of putting some additional incentive onto that, and—and—and that's what brings us here.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews clarifies. Marcus?
Yeah, I think going along with Dan said as well, like, all required to have at least one. So is there an option to have more than one? And what does that look like as far as—so Janice, I feel like probably lives in one development, and do we have a representative from the other developments? Or is that something that we considered or would consider, to have, I guess, just more of a representation for—from the different places?
Well—
And I'm just trying—listen, yeah, to understand, yeah.
Again, I'm speaking as one member of the Needham Housing Authority Board and for myself, giving the answer I just gave. And just reflecting, you know, these questions haven't been asked before. So I'm just thinking out loud in front of you as an individual and having been around this for a while. I think, first of all, we have four developments. So you, in theory, by that, you know, approach, would have all tenants on that—
Okay.
—except for the state-appointed commissioners. So that's one way of looking at the world. Secondly, you know, I was thinking about the first question you asked me. And my answer was, you know, that really hadn't come up before and hadn't thought about it. I think the answer I would give off the top of my head is, with Needham always ensuring that there was a tenant commissioner—so this was never an issue—for us. My impression, and I would ask people who've been around here longer than I, is—is we think we had the right balance. You know, that when you have a good tenant commissioner, that person doesn't just represent one development or another. Karen Huey never did that. She was really there for everybody. And where you happen to live had nothing to do with how good a job she did. And it's a difficult job because you're kind of in the middle. You're kind of being pulled in two different directions, a fiduciary direction and, you know, being a tenant commissioner, and it's not always easy. And I think we like the idea that we have somebody representing the governor and has direct access into DHCD, somebody who's a tenant commissioner and represents that community. And—and then three other folk who are town folk who have taken an interest in supporting deeply affordable housing in town. And, you know, they spend countless volunteer hours doing that for no pay whatsoever. We used to get paid. We—one time, a long time ago, we got, I think, $600 for the year, but that was eliminated in case we were corrupted by it. And—and—and we've had, as long as I've been around, some really excellent individuals elected by the town folk. And that seems to be the right balance for the—the board. It's worked for us over the years.
So I would just say to that—that it's worked for as long as it has, but this question's never been asked, kind of like you said. So having that balance or just having one person that is a tenant, even though the volunteer people are so entrenched and give their time, I think, maybe thinking about having more than one—it—I don't think it would hurt the balance to have more than one person to—to represent the community and the people that live there, not only just volunteer, but the people that are in—in Needham Housing, you know, 24/7, to get more of a perspective. And then that person kind of has, I guess, someone else there that kind of understands a little bit more of the day-to-day and everything and not just volunteering. So I just wanted to put that out there and say that, you know, just because we've always done it that way, no one's asked a question, it wouldn't hurt to kind of maybe revisit that. And I don't know what the process to make that happen, but I—I think it's worth talking about.
I—I hope I can comment on that.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And say—I—I—I don't mean to give the impression that I'm saying it's a bad idea.
Oh.
So, you know, please, I hope that isn't the way I came across.
No, no.
What I will say is that, speaking to the Housing Authority Board, and I've observed this with other boards in town, it's really hard to find people who want to run. It really takes a lot of work even to get one person to go through the process, not, you know, to do it, number one, and then be willing to put in those hours, you know, which, you know, can be considerable if you take it seriously. And, you know, so it would, you know, great if we could find two people. We didn't this time around, so maybe that's possible in some other way.
Okay.
And I would just add to that, Reg.
Sure.
Looking at past ballots and elections, there have been, you know, vacancies and hard to find someone to even run for positions. So it is a challenging, difficult position, but your comments are understood. Mary Ann?
Well, and I would have also said that sometimes people choose to take on different roles, right? And it could be—I don't know if there's a—a housing council of some level that provides some level of—there are different ways to provide input at different levels of involvement.
Okay.
And I don't know what might create more voices at the table, which is part of what you're worried about, is being sure those voices are being heard. But this is, you know, a governance oversight fiduciary board, which is a very particular role. And I actually appreciate the work that's been done to ensure that there's a tenant commissioner at the table. But it is a challenge, I think, in a lot of ways. And I know that—that the group—I'm grateful, I know, has just come through a tremendously challenging period, working through the issues at the housing authority. And when we talk about hours in a day, I know you're running out of hours of the day during that period. So thank you for all the work with the commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Um, so a couple of questions. So you said, you know, raising this new kind of consideration, I think, is important, number one. But two, you were saying that the board was working well so far, and I was just curious, like, the other board members are not here, correct?
No, they're not.
And—and they're not on Zoom? They're not?
I didn't see them on the attendee list, no. They know about the meeting, though, and we did talk about it in the last two board meetings.
Well, just thinking of governance, because I—my recollection is that there was an investigation, correct, in the past couple of years—
Yes.
—about Needham Housing Authority? And so I'm curious, like, where that stands and what kind of follow-through has there been in terms of considering some of these issues? And what is this— And what is this, is this going, is this the best way to address that? And if not, like, I'm curious, there might be other solutions.
I don't want to venture too far from the four corners of this appointment. I think there'd be another time where the Housing Authority can come in, because I think we do have a lot of questions about what your projects are upcoming, where you're going with the development. And I had a lot of those questions, but tonight I want to keep this really in the four corners of this actual appointment and questions regarding the structure. And I will say typically, you know, when you have, send someone or the chair to a meeting, it's usually, you don't have the full board. You're the one invited to, to come to us and present this for our consideration. So just with that, I think we're going to have another whole discussion on different matters with the Housing Authority as we move forward. Do you have any final questions, Lakshmi? I'm not trying to cut you off here, but I do want to stay right in these four corners. And we can put this on a further agenda.
Well, I think that, but it does raise some concerns about governance changes and thinking about this, putting this in effect without what we just heard about getting tenant representation. So I guess I'm a little concerned in that way. But I don't have a follow-up.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Can I offer another?
Sure, briefly.
That I think is on point here, which is, you know, I certainly invite both of you, either of you, to come to our board meetings. They're open just like this. We are back to doing them on Zoom now that, you know, we finally got that snafu. So they're easy to just attend virtually. And, you know, we start every board meeting with an open forum with the tenants. This is not done in a lot of other housing authorities. And anybody can walk in and get three minutes to say whatever it is they want within the rules of decorum, you know? And what they, they can't start criticizing each other, you know? They can't bring up personal issues and so forth. But we devote that time at the beginning of every meeting. So there really is a, you know, something to learn, you know? Again, not to say these aren't good questions to ask, but I invite you to, you know, attempt and see what you think.
Thank you for that invitation. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, not to belabor it, but I guess since we've opened the topic up and to try to speak to this. The Housing Authority, as a volunteer policymaking board in town, which is actually part of a separate agency from the town government.
Right.
Is probably, in my experience, one of the most challenging roles in town government. You've got over 300 units, 339 units, which are basically safety net affordable housing units and are key to the town in many ways. Most of them built with federal funding that hasn't been present in affordable housing in any real amounts in over 40 years. And yet you're still operating and managing them. There are tough management issues and some difficult, and when a, when a board is stretched, an agency is stretched as thin as yours. And this happens all over the state. There can be problems, and Lakshmi has pointed to some of, some of that history, which is still, your board members are still trying, and current execs are still trying to sort out. So you've got difficult management issues. You've got the needs to manage hundreds of units for a very, for a sometimes very challenged population of tenants. Making sure that the waiting lists are fairly managed, because even though the housing is in tough shape, there are like long waiting lists to get into those properties reflecting on our regional conditions. And in addition, they all need, those units need to be brought current and renovated and upgraded and brought into code compliance. And the Housing Authority owns additional land on which additional affordable housing units could be built if we could find the funding and the bandwidth and all of the different things that have, which includes both federal role and management role at the local level and a lot of things in between, senior RFP that's out there, which looks like a good approach to bring in outside expertise to provide the support that you need for this. So there's an enormous amount on the plate. The question that's presented here, as I understand it, is whether or not to go from the current model of four elected commissioners and one governor's appointed to three elected commissioners, one government-appointed, and one tenant appointment by this, by this board. I understand, that's what I understand the choice to be. And I guess when I'm looking at it, I'm hearing what you say because of the, we've had good track record with tenant participation. Needham has been out front of a lot of other towns that have brushed this, the issue of tenant representation on the board aside. Needham has had tenant representation for decades. There's nothing that precludes having more than one tenant on the board, but those, the candidates either have to run for election or they have to go through the governor's appointment process, whichever, whichever may happen. But I'm not saying that one is the better outcome or the other, or that I would permanently preclude changing this over. I'm really, I'm really concerned that the many challenging issues that you face and the work that's got to get done proceed forward and that you have the best team that you can do that. And it seems to me to keep the four elected seats at this time makes sense. Although, as I'm saying, I'm trying to listen to what everybody is saying as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Marcus?
Yeah, then just one more thing. So hypothetically, if we were to approve this new model, how long would it be in effect for? And say, if we wanted to revisit about having possibly more than one tenant down the road, like, how would this, this isn't forever?
So like. This is an annual waiver.
Annual, okay. So this would take place through the next election?
To 2026, if we go forward with that. So not the next election, but to the, you know, end of Janet Bennett's term here. So if it doesn't get submitted tomorrow, next year, then, you know, the first elected seat to have the term expire, which would be Penny Kirk's in 2023, would become the appointed seat, as I understand it.
That's correct. That's all I understand it to. Mary Ann?
And another tenant could choose to run at that time.
Correct.
For that seat. That is always an option, okay?
For Penny Kirk's, sorry?
Right.
Yes, okay.
For one of the elected seats. So tenants could choose to run for one of the elected seats. But this model is required by the state that somebody be appointed, a tenant be appointed by the select board. We are opting to fill it through the waiver process with the tenant who's already been elected.
Elected as a.
Recommendation.
That's correct. And just also, you know, it is complicated and it's the Needham Housing Authority, but you report to the state, right?
Correct.
So that gets confused sometimes.
But we were very closely with the town.
You've been a great partner. And as you said, you were ahead of the curve having a tenant, you know, appointed instead of the way the state is now requiring. So, thank you. Is there a motion for the board to vote to support the Needham Housing Authority in seeking a waiver? For, there's no public comment on this, sorry, sir. Waiver for Janice Bennett, who was elected to the Needham Housing Authority Board on April 13th, 2021, and whose term expires in April 2026, and was a qualifying tenant of the Needham Housing Authority. Is there a motion to be made?
I'm sorry. Matt, can you repeat what the?
Sure, the motion, as it appears in your packet, that the board voted to support the Needham Housing Authority in seeking a waiver for Janice Bennett, who was elected to the Needham Housing Authority Board on April 13th, 2021, and whose term expires in April 2026, and was a qualifying tenant of the Needham Housing Authority. Is there such a motion? Mary Ann?
Excuse me, is there any possibility to raise some questions on this process?
Sir, this is not the correct form to do some, it's not a public hearing. Thank you. We are available 6:45 for public comment to this board. And as Mr. Foster said, they are available to take tenant comments at his board as well. But this is not a public hearing, sir. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion from this board? Hearing and seeing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Enjoy the day.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is outdoor dining update. Katie King. Welcome, how are you?
It's great to be here in person.
It's great to be here, it's great to see everybody. And this is a, one of the items that has a town, and you and the town manager and staff has really worked hard, and Mary Ann on the outdoor dining. Oh, my gosh, is that, wow, see?
About a year after my first day on the job.
Oh, my, okay, well, welcome. It's so natural after all these Zoom times, it didn't occur to me, obviously. So the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so two updates on the outdoor dining front. The first is on to-go alcoholic beverages. So the state did take action and extended restaurants' ability to sell to-go alcohol until May 1st of 2022. The select board, you all had a temporary policy to allow the consumption on certain properties. That expires on August 15th. So our recommendation is if the board's interested in extending that policy, we would add it to your July agenda to not have a gap.
Okay.
And the second update is just outdoor dining overall. So again, the state did take action to extend the outdoor dining allowances that had been in place during the state of emergency until April 1st of 2022. This board and the planning board had already voted to extend our local policies to align with this. So all the outdoor dining setups that we have out there today are stable through this season. And our aim, as you know, is to go to fall town meeting with a revised policy framework. So as you mentioned, the downtown working group, which Ms. Cooley has been convening, Ms. Balchanda has started joining. We have representatives from the planning board, a number of relevant town departments. We did a review, basically, of what is the existing outdoor dining zoning bylaw that's in place? What did we learn through the pandemic? And how does that inform what we bring to fall town meeting? So really, the punchline is that our existing pre-pandemic policies had an as-of-right process. And if you met specific guidelines, you could get approval. But there was not a clear legal authority for the select board or the planning board to process kind of an equivalent of a special permit or a right-of-way licensure if the application didn't meet those kind of fast-tracked as-of-right criteria. Specifically, the existing zoning prohibits the use of parking spaces for outdoor dining. And so there was no avenue by which either board could consider an application that did use a parking space. The same is true, our current laws restrict how much of the overall seating capacity could be increased by outdoor dining. And it requires waitstaff service. So those are the areas that we're taking a look at. And the kind of next steps for the group is we have draft policy goals. Those are in your agenda packets. And our proposal is to kind of put these goals out to the community through a public online survey in the coming weeks to say, are we getting these right? We're looking about creating quality public spaces, supporting our small businesses, maintaining safe access, and balancing parking needs. So we propose to kind of put this out to the public, see if we're on the right track. And then we have a seemingly fast, I can't believe we're talking about fall town meeting. But a fast timeline where the planning board would be voting on draft zoning changes at their July meeting to get the ball rolling to send back to this board. They would have a public hearing on that zoning in September, finalize the language in October, and then we're at town meeting. So that's the update. Have any answer questions?
Great, thank you. And I will say, you know, on the, the two things, outdoor dining, I think that was such a hit. And I think this board and the other boards are in favor of it, of course, with these caveats and trying to figure out a way through the parking issues. The out-carry out alcohol, I think that's a larger discussion. I think we will extend it, as we talked about, you know, just personally speaking. But I think it's going to be a larger discussion on how that's handled in the future, post emergency order, but, or post deadline that we give it. So with that, Mary Ann?
So I was just going to ask, I don't think the policy guidelines, it doesn't look like it made it to either packet. So at some point, they'll need to be distributed and definitely we'll hope to have them to discuss on Thursday morning or Wednesday morning or whenever we're meeting this week, since I'm not remembering which day yet. When the group gets back together. And as Matt just mentioned, the really critical piece is that we have heard from people in the town that they want this to consider, continue, which means we need the framework. Oh, I thought it was what Katie had.
These are just my talking notes.
All right, okay. These were just the policy goals, I got it. I thought we had more background on that. Great. So these are the goals that were developed by the working group that, that we're now trying to build appropriate language that town meeting can approve. So we've heard people, they want it to continue. We need to put something in place that will support doing that. We will definitely, I think, have a larger discussion about the take-out alcohol, I think. But I will say that that's specifically a question that I asked Tim McDonald and the Board of Health when we met recently. And we're, we're not hearing from them that they're seeing any issues in Needham as a result of the policies that have been in place now for a year. So.
Which is great, yeah. Ms. Balchanda?
So question, Katie. So these, basically, the process is you'll get feedback, it goes to the planning board, it gets approved, and then there's something at town meeting that will basically be voted on to make sure that outdoor dining will continue. So in this period, it's still going to continue over the summer? And so we're fine until October town meeting? Is that the?
Yes, exactly. So nothing will change for any businesses that are out there now. What's going to go out to the public are just those draft policy goals, the visioning, you know? What, is this the vision that you have for outdoor dining? Then what the planning board will take up is the actual legal language to change the zoning bylaw.
Okay, and that will happen? So the zoning bylaws will change with a vote as of October for perpetuity, essentially, right?
Well, just to be clear, you know, the zoning changes will create the process by which businesses will have a framework to apply under the new rules. So there'll be a period from fall town meeting to the outdoor dining season of spring of '22, where both boards, this one and the planning board, will have to process applications that come in.
Okay, thanks. So that, so that's the process. And then as for spring dining, but that's what will continue even beyond, is what we're, basically, my question is, what we're establishing for fall is what will be the new policy for outdoor dining? So there's kind of no limitations, no time limits, no kind of COVID rule? Is that what we're thinking?
So what, fall town meeting will vote on in October will be the rules by which any applicant will have to follow come next spring. That doesn't guarantee that they'll be approved in that process, but it gives them the process by which to apply.
So any restaurant, et cetera, cafe can apply for the permit and they can then be approved for outdoor dining capabilities?
Correct.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, it'll set the framework for which they have to, you know, apply to their business and make sure that they comply with our zoning bylaw. But yes, that's correct. Yes, great. Any further questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Yes, go ahead, Lakshmi.
My husband's from New Orleans, and outdoor to-go beverages have never been an issue.
Yeah.
Right. Alcohol can be to-go.
Yeah, and they can have it on the streets, too. And I'm not saying one way, one way or the other where this board is. I know there's just been some discussion back and forth on it. And instead of having a quick vote about it, I think we just have to have a broader discussion and probably land in the right place, as we always do. So, thank you. Great, Katie, thank you. Next item on the agenda then would be to talk about remote meeting update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick update, because we have been talking about this for weeks now, to say from your, since your last meeting, the legislature and the governor did act, they extended some of the suspension of the open meeting law that existed under the state of emergency. So until April 1st of 2022, all public bodies can remain entirely remote if they so choose. So basically, now the legal framework is any option. You can be in person, entirely on Zoom, or something in the middle. Technology-wise, we're still in the same place. So select board, planning board, ZBA, and the school committee can be hybrid because we have the technology to support them with the partnership of the Needham Channel. Beyond that, we're asking committees to decide really in person entirely or all Zoom at this point until we have more technology options for them.
Good. And have you heard from other boards and committees as far as what their preference is besides the boards that you mentioned? Or are we, we surveying, reaching out, or what? Is it pretty much remote?
Informally, we've been hearing, honestly, the biggest feedback immediately was that a lot of people wanted to stay all remote, particularly through the summer.
Sure, sure, I understand that. And thank you. I didn't mention the Needham Channel at the beginning for a thank you to making this possible. So of course, that's a huge, huge help. Any discussions on this agenda item as far as remote participation? Yes, Mr. Matthews?
Just that I know, I don't know the status of them, but there are a number of initiatives pending in the legislature. So there may be more changes and updates going forward.
pending in the legislature, so there may be more changes and updates going forward.
True.
I had a similar comment. It sounded like there's a lot of activity around making sure that equitable access, you know, not only have the technology and being able to increase remote participation would be lovely. So I'd love to see that happen.
Great. Mary Ann?
Katie, I just wondered if you could also do a little bit of an update for the public about what we're working on to have more capacity for hybrid meetings for more committees?
Yep, great question.
And what the gates are for that, so that people understand what the challenges are.
Right. So our IT department has been hard at work looking at different options to pilot, both so that we don't have to be reliant on the Needham Channel and their staff, but we could have boards and committees, even those that are on staff, to be able to have a lower tech option. So IT's looking at piloting some of the more heavily used conference room spaces in town, and we'll be working throughout the summer to procure and see what we can get on board. And so I think we're aiming for the fall to have more things available for folks to try out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Katie, thank you so much for those updates. Next item on the agenda, town manager. Kate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two items for the board. The first is an update on the so-called ARPA funds from the federal government, which cities and towns will be receiving over the next few years. So we're just in the process of figuring out the application process and proposed uses. There's two different, the way, the way some of these programs have worked is that the guidance is issued and then it changes. So I'm going to say this is as of right now, that we expect, we could see as much as $3 million from the Commonwealth, from the federal government directly, and then we're allocated about $6 million for money that is being issued to us by the county, by virtue of our being in the county. So we have applied for the state through to the federal government funds, and we'll let, keep you posted as to where that is. There seems to be some immediacy to that funding. The county is working hard, Norfolk County is one of the few remaining counties, is working hard to figure out how it's best to distribute $135, $137 million or so to its member community. So we'll be, we'll keep you updated on that. With respect to the use, I think in many ways, the board's discussions with other boards and policy goal-setting over the summer will inform some of the use. We'll have recommendations for you. I think there's a number of things that we have in mind that we might be able to use these funds for. It's both restrictive and quite broad, right? So there is water, sewer, road, infrastructure work that can be done, work that can support health initiatives, behavioral health initiatives, and also, you know, whether there's ways to support businesses that have been impacted by COVID. So we would expect to, over the summer, identify some of these projects, talk to other boards. I would say we should be looking, you know, in some ways, infrastructure is our go-to. It could take pressure off of our future capital plans and our debt. On the other hand, maybe, I think we should think broadly and grandly about what we might do with it, and then also, you know, in some small more items, for instance, you know, even small dollars allocated to our behavioral health could make a huge difference. So we expect more in July and August on that subject. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that piece if there are any.
Yes, Lakshmi?
Just a question on timing. Kate, when, so the application would be the summer to the state? Because it flows through the state, right?
So the first, the first tranche of money is through the state directly from the federal government? We've actually filed our intent. That's due by the end of June, so one hopes. There was an option to decline, although I did not exercise that option on your behalf. So it could be that those funds come to us this summer, and so we would have. The other interesting thing about these funds, all of them, is that they are considered a grant, and they're treated as a grant, so they're not subject to further appropriation. So it is a reason why I think the board should have a broad conversation with many stakeholders and many boards and committees about what we end up doing with those funds.
Sorry, just a follow-up clarification. So if it's grant money, is it a use or lose sort of situation, or is it?
The, there is a period by which it needs to be used, but it's several years.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Discussion? Yes, Marcus?
And for this one, this is, it's over the next few years, so there's going to be different blocks. So we're getting some of it now and then some of it later. It's not all coming at the same time. So we have, you know, over the next four years, three years?
Four years to use it?
Yeah.
As of now, the instruction on the first phase is that there's half now and half in the end of the year.
Okay.
Again, these, these change a lot, so that's what, before we sign any contracts, we'll have the money in hand.
Okay.
We will continue to work with the county on when that money will come through, but again, we have that period to use it. And this money is really the, that plan that came through in the spring. It is not the massive infrastructure plan that is also being discussed in Congress, so we have many ideas for that. Where are we to be able to access any of those funds too?
Right. Yeah, this could be a terrific opportunity to do those things, those big things and small things that we normally couldn't have. And I think the benefit, as you mentioned, Kate, is that it's not subject to town meeting vote, it's really a vote after collaboration.
It can be used quickly.
Can be used quickly. Thank you. Any further discussion on that, this line item? Okay, second item, two things you said.
Just a shout out to our partners in Health and Human Services and Trader Joe's, who've collaborated and delivered 2,400 bags of groceries that were packed and put together. And we're phasing that program out now because we're moving towards an in-person use and, you know, bringing people to the center and serving meals. So it's just been a wonderful collaboration with them, and we want to thank them, and really for all the staff at HHS who went and got them and paid the bill every two or three days, and then, and our staff who then delivered them. So it's a great, great program that I know, having heard firsthand from many people how much they appreciated.
Thank you.
That's my update.
Good story and good news.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate. Next item on the agenda, committee reports. Are there any committee reports that wish to speak? None? Okay, well, I do have an item of business. We have one of our teammates and team members retiring, Ms. Sinkada. You probably heard that at town meeting, that this is the end, but not the end, right? Just the start of a new beginning. And just a few comments from me, Sandy. To me, you were the backbone in the town manager's office and of this board. When you wanted something done, would call Sandy, and it was always great that you'd know when you did that it would get done, and you fielded a lot of calls, a lot of applications. I fondly remember the Ally Raisman event where it got sprung upon us pretty quickly, and you were there to, had four days, to turn everything around and get everything done and get her to speak, and it was just a fabulous event. So it's events like those that, you know, we're in the forefront and you make us look good, but you're in the background making us look good. So I really appreciate all your work and wish you luck in your retirement to new beginnings, Sandy. Thank you. And with that, we have a gift from the board, and it is a plant. Actually, I probably should have given it to you before I told you what it was. That's all right. But, you know, once I tell you where it's from, you could probably figure it out. It's from West Leaf, which is one of the pop-up shops in Needham, just got, was established on Great Plain Avenue and Chestnut Street. And here you are.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. It may be green long into retirement. That's, I hear you have a green thumb, so I hope that lasts long, long, long time. But thank you again. If any other members of the board have a few things to say. Dan?
I'm not going to pass that opportunity up. Sandy, it's just been, been wonderful, and people can't stop praising you, but that's just because it's deserved. You've, it's, it's a pretty hectic place to work, and you've done it for a couple of decades, and you've been a great help to this board, you've been a great help to me and a great help to the town, and thank you. All the best.
Thank you. Enjoyed my time here. Learned a lot from all of you.
Good. Thank you, Sandy.
It's been a pleasure to serve the record of Needham as a public police.
Very nice. Thank you, Sandy. Any further comments? Mary Ann?
I would just say thank you to Sandy. I'm grateful for your partnership. Here we are, right? Can I even see you? I'm grateful for your partnership. I'm grateful for all the times that you have bailed me out, and I'm especially grateful for all your work when, on the years where I've had appointments, and here you're going to have me go through this without you this time. I'm going to miss you. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I know it hasn't been long, but since I've gotten here, you've always greeted me with a smile, and when it comes to emails and things and what's going on and our weekly updates and everything like that, it's been just really nice to have your smiling face and your enthusiasm, and I know that you're moving on to a new chapter, but for the short time that I've known you, greatly appreciative. So best of luck to you, and I'm sure we'll see you around.
I will echo Marcus's comment. I have not had much time to have the great joy of working with you, as it sounds like, but really appreciate everything that I've had my experience with you thus far, and really excited to hear what you do next.
Yeah, doing my job.
Yeah, exactly.
That's good. Kate, do you have any final words you work with Sandy?
Seventeen, many, many years. Yes, all of the good things that have happened have become Sandy, and I'll take ownership of all the, all the mistakes. But no, Sandy and I have worked so closely together, it's really, it's really going to be very hard making a transition. Sandy pretty much knows what I'm thinking. I'll walk in and she'll say, I already did it. So I do want to let people know, we're having an event for Sandy on the Common on Wednesday, June 30th at 11 o'clock, and so it would be great if people came and said goodbye to Sandy, which we will continue to do for the next eight days. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. But who's counting, right? Who's counting? Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, it offered the motion that the board go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation.